CTI team will do some of the comprehensive wraparound while they're engaged in that service as well. So it's, you know, many things in mental health and substance abuse treatment are either/or. You have to do this, then you can have that. This is the one service that can happen simultaneously with other services, which is kind of what bolsters the community supports about it. And in terms of employment, one of the, in our application, the service in and of itself is not going to kind of impact all the life domains that somebody needs. One of my favorite quotes about this is "If we knew what to do, we would have already been doing it." And so this is really to kind of get all of the smartest, most innovative, forward-thinking people into a room and say, "If we only had this." And then part of it is to try to make this happen. And to take inventory of what we do already have that could work better if it served more, if it did this, if it had more money. There are no easy answers. This is a very complicated, complex social issue. And so that is part of the reason that we are convening the partnership committee around a collective impact model that will give more precision to the community interventions that support this program. We are in the process of meeting with a number of employers. We met with one today. And every time we meet with one, they suggest three others. And so some of it is just getting out there and talking about who we're serving and what we're doing and the supports that we can lend and what would it take for an employer to feel comfortable hiring somebody over another applicant who has a criminal record and a mental health issue.
Okay. Well, I do understand that it's more than just dealing with substance abuse, but you and I both know that substance abuse is normally the root of the problem and a lot of the estus.
Yes, especially when you're talking about the criminal justice population.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just for informational purposes for the board, Mr. Lancaster and I went to a meeting today at the hospital and we found out some things that we didn't know, or I didn't know, I can't speak for Larry, but I was not aware that you can buy cocaine now cheaper than you can buy a pack of cigarettes. I did not know that. You can buy cocaine cheaper than you can buy a pack of cigarettes.
It's darn taxing.
But I didn't know that. And we've come a long way in Cumberland County. I mean, I don't think we'll ever reach where we don't have any of this, but, and of course, this program only targets the adults, but the next target we need to identify is the youth. And what's going on with the youth? There were six suicides, I believe, in the school system last year among junior high school-aged children, and they are still children. And we've got to continue to work, we're serving our consumers better than we have ever served them in Cumberland County. And that's a result of the Alliance, not because I'm part of the board, but our consumers are being served very well, and we just need to continue to work on everything. And so, thank you, Ann. Thank you for your time being here.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Major, Mr. Cannon, thank all of you for all that you do. We appreciate it so much. All right. Ms. Cannon, we're down to the consent agenda. Anybody got anything that wants to be pulled tonight?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. There's been a motion by Ms. Counsel, second by Ms. Evans, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
Item number four, A, is uncontested rezoning cases. The first case is case P-15-42.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, both of these cases are uncontested and recommend approval by the planning board with unanimous vote. The first one is for a borrow-source operation.
Chairman, I would move for case number 1540, P-1542, we move to file a request for rezoning consistent with 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of the case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated here in my reference.
I think I need to open and close a public hearing. Open the public hearing. No speakers?
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing. Okay, that motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right.
Do you have a second?
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Fairclaw, you want to make a second motion?
Yeah. The second motion for case P-1542, I move that we approve the rezoning for A1 agricultural/COZ conditional zoning for a borrow-source operation as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of the case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated here in my reference.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is 4B. It's also a public hearing on case P-15-43.
I'll open the public hearing. Any different speakers?
No speakers.
Close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for case P-1543 for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated here in my reference.
A second?
Second.
Second motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
I move to approve the rezoning for RR Rural Residential as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated here in my reference.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is 4C, minimum housing code enforcement, case MH-1075-2015.
Hello. Who's my idea now?
John. Okay, I'm sorry.
John, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our first case is MH-1075, 2015, property owned by Peggy and James Hare. It's located in Cedar Creek area over at 3538 McKinnon Road. This is two structures on this property that are dilapidated. The property owner has signed a consent to demolish, and we request immediate demolition of this property.
Okay. I can't hear page 120.
121.
I can't.
Anybody there?
I move that we follow the recommendation.
Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
I can't bind it.
All right, I...
Mine's not coming up. Okay, I've got it.
Mine's not coming up.
Okay. Ms. Chair, I move that we adopt the order and report to the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and that we order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, that we order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and to impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, that we direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
A second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Counsel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is 4D, a minimum housing case number 858-2014.
This property is owned by Grace Morris, located at 204 Sharpsburg Road in the Linden area. Actually, it's the remnants of a dwelling or accessory structure that was on the property. Property owner's been a little slow about finishing this, so I wanted to make sure we could abate the property in case she didn't finish.
Any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll take it.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Keith.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the order and report to the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
For a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is a public hearing on minimum housing case 1038-2015, which is item 4F.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, this property is owned by...
Phil Passan.
Yeah, there you go.
That was cool.
Yeah, okay. Here we go. Property owner Stacy D. Carson airs. Property location is 5102 Donabell Drive, parcel ID 0415466502. This is a single-wide mobile home destroyed by fire, and we are seeking immediate demolition on it, oops, just as soon as we can.
Any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
Open the public hearing, close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I was very involved in this view of mine. I'd like to make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. To adopt the order and report to the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in the ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
For a second by anyone?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Lancaster. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The next public hearing is 4G, a minimum housing case 616-2014.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
This property is owned by Samuel. It says Francine, but I've come to find out today they're divorced, so she no longer has any claims to the property. Graham, at 3421 Seawell Street. The, I'm seeking a demolition of the structures on the property. This is the main structure. And I would like to have the property demoed and cleaned completely.
Any speakers?
We do have one speaker in favor, none in opposition.
Okay, does the speaker in favor need to speak?
This is David Dallas.
How you doing, Commissioner? I'm Sergeant Dallas of the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. I currently work with community policing and I'm handling nuisance and abatement. 3421 Seawell Street, following all the drug activity statistics, these amount of numbers have been occurred from actual operations conducted by the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office Narcotics Unit from the time of July 10, 2007, to May 20, 2015. Five controlled buys, one undercover buy. These six operators resulted in buying 10.30 grams of cocaine. Four search warrants resulted in 21 doses of units of oxycodone, 44.36 grams of crack cocaine, 118.71 grams of marijuana, and seven weapons and handguns and shotguns. They also have six intelligence reports located and complaints from numerous citizens in this area. This house is what's actually known as a trap house. You will never catch large amounts of drugs at this house. We just get some. We just recently raided this house, which I was involved with that also, and the guys took off running so fast. We went into the previous Golden Creek Mobile Home Park where they was throwing their drugs on the ground elsewhere. Got several arrests out of that. This house is, we got a total of 26 calls for service within that same timeframe with the activities mentioned about drugs and other activities. And we just, I just want to put those facts out there to see if there's anything you can do to help us with this house or make a decision in helping us with this house and trying to get the drug activity lowered in the Seawell area.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Close the public hearing. No other speakers, right?
No further speakers.
What's the wishes of the board?
Good night, Mr. Chairman.
You got it, Mr. Fairclaw.
I can get back to it real quick. Come on. Mr. Chair, I move that the board adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and that we order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, that we order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, that we direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
For a second?
Second.
For a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The last public hearing this evening is item 4H for minimum housing case 1026-2015.
Yes, this property is owned by Mac and Eunice Linton. It's at 6681 Muscat Road in Hope Mills. He has signed a consent to demo, and that's what I would like to seek, is it's just a single-wide mobile home that has been vandalized, and he just wants to get rid of it.
Okay. You got it.
I move that we adopt the order and report of minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, and to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
And I forgot to open and close the public hearing. No speakers, right?
There are no speakers.
Second the motion.
All right. Any discussion?
Say it again.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Was that 30 days? How did you?
30 days.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lloyd, do you want to introduce, I don't know if you met your new employee?
This is Scott Walters. He'll be presenting the minimum housing cases starting next month. He's Code Enforcement Section's manager, minimum housing zoning.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks.
Item number five is nominations to boards and committees.
First one is the air quality stakeholders committee. There is an exception to our rule on several of them, and I'll just follow the wishes of the board. This is a committee, I was on it for a long time. Mr. Lancaster's on it now. He may want to speak to it. This is a very difficult committee to get people to come to and to...
I'm sure he is.
...to serve on it. So it does a great job of trying to keep our air quality at a minimum level, but I'll leave that up to the board.
Mr. Chair, I've been a little vocal on this. I think that this is becoming more the norm. When I first started on, we used to have this maybe once a year, but we've seen it become very common, and I think that in a community and county of 325,000 people, that, you know, we should open up our boards a little bit more and allow others to come in. So I'm not going to be supporting any extensions, but again, the wishes of the board, I understand.
Yes, Mr. Keith, I think the clerk and you are working on some new guidelines or some revised guidelines?
We'd like to present to the policy committee in the next couple of months. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, what's the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Gregory Dean, who is willing to serve eligible for reappointment and suggests that we hold this to the next meeting.
All right, and all the rest of them are for third terms, is that correct?
It is very difficult to get, it is very difficult to get citizens to serve on certain of these committees, and this is one of them.
Right. And of course, we have to, we need to make some contact with these various people like PWC, Wade, the environmental representative, the industry stakeholder. If we're going to delay this, we need to make contact with them and tell them that we need to, we need to get a nominee. Maybe they can help us with that. I think we could probably take care of the citizen stakeholder, but it's hard to find people. So is there a second to Ms. Counsel's motion?
A second, sir.
All right, second by Mr. Lancaster. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Animal Control Board, one vacancy.
Moving nomination to be closed.
Mr. Evans?
I'd like to nominate John Smith.
Any other nominations?
I have no other nomination.
All right.
Does John still travel like he used to, or is he...
No, sir, he doesn't travel.
He used to?
Yes, sir, he did. You're absolutely right, but no, he doesn't. At least I don't think so.
There are no other nominations. We'll move on to item C, Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacancy.
Sonia Thompson, the nominator.
Any other nominations? All right, the Federal Area and Convention Bureau, item D.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
To the county manager. For clarification, first of all, they passed a whole new charter.
They made some revisions to their existing bylaws.
Right. And there's nothing in their bylaws that say that their appointment needs to be endorsed. There's still a 501(c)(6). There's nothing to say in their new bylaws that say their appointments have to be approved by the county commissioners or, I don't know, Mr. Attorney, is there, I don't understand the precedent for us having to vote on a private nonprofit.
And I did not review that. It's all in here. I mean, yeah, it just came in.
Yeah, and I guess, and my follow-up question is, by us making these approvals, the bylaws are in here now, does that mean that we're doing anything to approve their bylaws? Do we have, do we approve their bylaws at all, or...
The bylaws were just included to specify which positions were, or board seats were actually approved by the, or nominated by the Board of Commissioners.
And I must have missed that, because I didn't, I didn't catch that part of it, because I was looking for that in the...
It's under section 3J.
Okay.
An at-large member appointed by the Board of Commissioners, which is representative of one or more of the following groups: arts, culture, business, community, military, and has demonstrated interest in travel.
Do we know anything about, other than the general title of these people, like on the recommended appointment of Laura Lille? I know it says she's a representative of a hundred-room motel hotel, but it doesn't tell which one, does it?
She's the general manager of the Hampton Inn Cross Creek.
Okay, I probably didn't read down far enough.
Are these categoric, Mr. Chairman? Push the button.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Are these categorical, because I know that Ms. Holloman is at-large, so we don't need someone who is in any particular category.
Well, that's what's puzzling to me.
So I have another nomination. Or do we want to hold this over?
I think that... Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, and I read through it, and I saw the bylaws, and I was just kind of confused, because they changed some of the people of who OSCOM and who would be on those. If we could hold this to the next meeting, give us an opportunity, I'd just like to review that whole thing and maybe talk, too. But I think at one point, it said only two people showed up to meet, and the county manager and somebody else, so if I could just, if we could just pull it over.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
All right, it's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Mr. Fairclaw, for Mr. Boards and Committees.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that there are an equal number of nominees for the positions to be filled, I move that for the adult home care, the adult care home community advisory committee, we appoint Carla Fagan for the Animal Control Board, the City of Fayetteville resident position, George Butterfly for the Board of Adjustment, the two vacancies for a regular member, Vicky Mullins, which is a reappointment, and the alternative member, Alfonso Ferguson, Sr., has a reappointment, and I've moved that they all be accepted by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Mr. Chairman, item seven is a closed session for a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A6.
All right.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Mr. Adams has a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we ratify the contract engaging the Nance firm for outside legal services.
Second. There's been a motion, a second, to hire the Nance firm for outside legal services. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, let me point for the record that that was the contract that was on the August 3rd consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
I move to, Mr. Evans moves to adjourn. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, please forgive me. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay.
You can move to adjourn.